County Board of Commissioners, we'd like to welcome everybody and say we're glad you chose to come this way. We've got a lot of good items on the agenda tonight. We'll start out with any announcements that you might have. Mike, you or Jack, if you want to have any announcements to make. Commissioner Hager. The announcement. Commissioner Hager.
I think I saw an email about the planning board retreat.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was February 21st.
Yes.
Is that agreeable with everybody?
What time? I forgot the time.
Is that an even?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
I'm asking questions, I don't know.
Did anybody call Holly to get it set up?
We'll call Holly to set it up. We haven't called her yet.
What time, on the 21st?
Six o'clock.
I'm in Raleigh, not in Florence, but I'm in Florence.
So the planning department will arrange for us to do that, you know.
I'm not sure, but I'm going to ask.
I'll check.
And thanks to Commissioner Tate for doing that. That has been very productive and I think we've come a long way with our relationship with the planning board and everything seems to be working very well. I'd like Commissioner Tate again to report on that and for his retreat. Commissioner Higgins, have any things here in mind or suggestions?
A lot of things certainly aren't mine. We would stand and we're going to turn a moment silence. Give you time to reflect on what's important.
If you would remember that Senator Davis's dad passed away yesterday morning.
Yesterday.
And I talked to the senator this afternoon and he thanked everybody and made him carry the crying.
Thank you, Ryan. I forgot, I called Jim too. He was in Virginia. His dad died very suddenly of a heart attack. No pain meds, just like a little black switch and Jim was very grateful for the way he passed. It's very clear.
Please leave.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me see. As you know, we have to have a public hearing, Kim, every year with regards to Macon County Transit and Chester, we need to, we'll actually call that hearing to order.
Actually, we've got two of them. There's two separate public hearings, back to back. And let's get those completed. I think she has some proposed resolutions, one in connection with each.
Okay. So we need to do those separately?
I think technically yes.
Okay. We'll call the first hearing to order. This would be, Kim, we recognize you at this time.
I believe according to the, this is the section 5310.
5310, right.
Which deals with elderly and disabled individuals. And I know Commissioner Higginson, your news is probably, everybody else has heard, and I should be, although I have been for 10 years or so, but just for your benefit and for the community and the public who might be here, who don't understand this particular funding source, I'm just going to read just a brief description of it and I'll give you the budget numbers, what I have, I am replacing, kind of explain those a little bit. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. The goal of the 5310 funds is to provide community transportation services that meet the special needs, elderly persons, persons with disabilities, or the mass transportation services that are unavailable insufficient for in-traffic. Funds can be used for purchasing vehicles and related capital equipment and for operating costs. North Carolina is one of seven states approved to use up to one-third of its annual portion of Section 5311 funds for operating costs. The federal share of eligible capital cost may not exceed 80% of that cost of the activity unless the capital cost is an 80/80, and then the federal share cannot exceed 83%. The federal share of eligible operating costs may not exceed 50% of that cost. So that being said, the primary purpose of these funds is to support transportation for the target populations of the elderly and disabled. Obviously, given the population in North Carolina, I think they're a percentage, if you look at North Carolina as a whole, we have one of the top populations in elderly anyway. I already have had two of these. Just completed the second one now. They, this particular grant is a two-year funded grant. So based on my budget for years, what I'm going to be asking for is operating and just a little bit of capital fund. The operating funds will total, for a two-year period, $355,500. Now that breaks down to a budget amount of $177,750 per year, which would mean 88,875 of that in each of the two years would be federal money, with the remaining 88,875 in local. What we use for matching funds to these are state eligible and disabled funds that we get. This year, our allocation was $55,476. And then the remainder comes from contracts with the senior services and making citizens' enterprises who have disabled, they serve disabled people. We can use basically any non-FDA funds as match, so it does not have to come from local funds. We can also use like any of the grant funds we get where we have contacts with the motion companies or whatever. So at this point, I foresee being able to meet that bridge as a match using existing river and use those non-local ones. For capital, we'll be requesting $6,501, that's a one-time expense. North Carolina DOT used our funds to put families in our vehicles for safety purposes. However, they only used it for vehicles that were funded under a different federal section. Those that we had funded through 5310, we have three, did not receive. So this will pay for that. 80% of that would be funded through the federal and with the 650 for local and 650 for state. Just for your information, the current grant amount that we have was $323,000. I expect this will pay for about 22,000 trips for elderly and disabled people in North Carolina. The funding is used to get people to Ashland, to Dr. Shapleton's veterans, to the VA, to Ashland, the elders, also for local alternatives, local shopping. We have somebody who has this clear, the commissioner, who's just, who's moved to South Carolina. So that's kind of getting, and that's your other question probably, more than that is what you're going to do.
And again, gentlemen, that was on the section 5313. Kim, let's take it separately. So any questions regarding what she just presented, comments? We did not have anyone sign up in the public to speak. That was a previous campaign, we didn't have anybody up the script. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this? And we're entirely open for the second part, which is the Macon County Community Transportation Program application.
Do you need to vote on them separately?
You're on both hands or?
Probably go ahead and do the public hearing since it was scheduled.
Right. So this is Macon County Community Transportation Program application. If you would.
And each of these does have a resolution that's required of the government for, and basically what the resolution does is authorize an individual who most usually with us have always been a community manager. On the 50, on the community transportation, it's also known as 5311. It's also a federal program that comes from the federal transit administration. A portion is appropriated 5311 funds annually to the government each day for public transportation projects in non-urbanized areas. So this 5311 funds are used for rural areas. Technically, the Section 5311 program intends to enhance the access of people to non-urbanized areas to new healthcare, shopping, education, employment, public services, and recreation, assist in the maintenance, development, improvement, and use of public transportation in the non-urbanized or rural areas, encourage and facilitate the most efficient use of all transportation funds used to provide passenger transportation in rural areas through coordination of progress and services. Basically, that means, before we started, PSS may have done their transportation, they showed their transportation, but Senior Center provided their transportation, and then I'm relying on one for private human service transportation and also off the public transportation for people who are not eligible under any of these social conditions. Also, it is to assist in the development support of interstate bus transportation and providing transportation providers in rural areas. Now with this one, we have administrative funding and capital funding. The administrative funding basically covers, and in this grant, what it covers is three administrative positions, myself, the office manager, administrative assistant, and the transit department. It will also pay for marketing, advertising, telephone expense, uniforms, a portion of vehicle insurance, printing, just the basic day-to-day, everything except for kind of keep the office up. What we'll be requesting is $189,531, that's an amount that we've been heading to for at least five years now. It also includes some reimbursement for indirect costs as well. Of that, the local share will be $28,470, that's a 15%. In addition to the administrative portion, we'll be asking for an additional $6,400 for, and the original, let me explain this, the $6,400 will be to replace a laptop, two desktop computers, a color laser network for us, place signage of the entryway on the paneling into our office, and add security cameras to our parking lot. With the $6,400, $5,120 that we've had with funds for the remaining $640, state, $640. Originally, in the notice, we had included, it was $117,900, the reason why I had included that was I was hoping to be able to extend my office on one end. We have grown such that we have a full-time operations supervisor, so I would claim this to take our conference room and divide that into two offices, but I met with Tom Mager, and we just felt like we could not get enough of space to accommodate what we were trying to do, and we just feel like it would be a better option for when we do our trainings or hold meetings that will require more than say six or eight people just to go offside. Our trainings are the big issue. There's 23 other tracks and we don't want to get in the conversation, but we couldn't fill them in just building up. We decided rather than moving out there, we'll just go offside. And I talked to Bailey, I was the trainer, and we left the track ready, it was definitely there. So therefore, that's why it went down, which don't have to say by now. But if there are any questions on this, this grant, I'd certainly be glad to entertain them as well.
Gentlemen, any questions? Kim, and again, Mr. Tremblay gave you the list and no one signed up to speak. Well, we can hear anyone in attendance to relax, speak to this part of the accreditation.
Can we ask questions on the first and second?
Sure.
On the first, we're asking $177,400.
Not a Kim. All right, the total was $355,500 for two years. So that's basically $178,000. 50% of that will come from the grant from FDA, and the other 50% will come from what we get through the state and through our contracts.
Okay, what do you think that figure should actually count for?
On that one, we expect to meet the match with the revenue we, I'm not asking.
Okay. Go ahead. Okay. On the second, we just had, it's $40,200.
No, it's dropped. It's now $29,700 because the $117,900 was included through the expansion of the facility that we decided not to do. So that's dropped to $6,400, which makes the new total progress 195,931.
Okay, county funds would be how much?
County funds would be $29,700 if we do not incur more revenue through our contracts.
One last question, is you have down how much money that federal office takes in per year for these chargebacks?
It's about 40, have the number right in my head, but if I would guess, I would guess it's somewhere around 40,000. We have a general public rate and then we have a discount rate that we offer for elderly and disabled. And on that, the first grant, we, where it's operating, we do that for a contact from the passengers, depending on where they're going, the road barriers, and that also helps meet that match. We use that as a match.
To mind all these laws, I think that Kim will be able to tell that.
I don't know. For several years, I have been here, I've been doing this job here for 70 years, and I can't say this to 100 people, but I imagine about, I'll be conservative, 10 to 12 of those 17 years, we have either broke even or exceeded a regulation. Some of that helps because we get that indirect cost and a lot of times that offsets. Some of them match, especially on the administrative grade, tends to be kind of what I expect that. But we do try to not spend more than we do. Fuel is really the, our, last year is a very expensive, that hurt us last year.
It's been a little better.
Well, it's been slightly better. It's actually been better than it was last year. Last year, we spent about $90,000. But we also provided 330.
They have budgets.
330.
And they're out early. How many will they, what time do they take the first dialysis basis?
They leave the opportunity between 5:45 and 6:00. They're taking the first one up to 26:00, 27:00, 28:30.
28:30 is when it came out.
We're sitting, well, now that may have been in the national. But we're sitting in silverback because we also provide transportation for the first year.
Are there any questions? Is there any?
Full-time or part-time, there's two. It fluctuates, depends on having any part-timers we have at that time. We have three full-time, I'm sure you share, two full-time operations, but this veteran is provided and four full-time, everybody else.
Any questions? Is there any?
Full-time or part-time, there's two. It fluctuates, depends on having any part-timers we have at that time. We have three full-time, I'm sure you share, two full-time operations, but this veteran is provided and four full-time, everybody else.
Any questions, comments?
Chairman, I would say that a lot of other transportation agencies, different places that I've worked in, you know, all have as good a record as we have here. A lot of them do have additional subsidies from counties and so forth. Credit, again, their staff, they've done a good job, taken the resources, maximized what I asked for, we've gone and it runs for the last five years, I can't remember. Come back and ask for kind of questions to supplement, what you plan, so I can manage it very well.
About two years ago came on, Brian was one of his transactions, his play is on, so I've worked closely with him and I can tell you his observations, he runs tight shit and does a good job and so much needed service. You don't realize that if you let some folks get off nominal strips, that's not where they get some work.
And it's not, and it is, yeah, I appreciate everything you're saying. I wonder if there's a lot of people that realize that we do more than that, people who have results. We have a large number of people that we are, or that we're. There weren't, there were some shows that were, that 3,000, you know, where it hit you, yeah, you threw it out.
And you have a lot of tribute going to the other representatives. Any other questions? Any other comments? If not, we'll clear, the hearing closed. And Chester, do you want to address the resolutions? And I think if you look behind each one of those pages, you see the resolution.
First resolution you probably need to look at is the one involving 5310, that early individuals who need to do the disability appropriate written application. There's a resolution that would essentially authorize that application to be made, followed through, and enter into the appropriate contract.
Motion to approve the resolution, that's the head.
We have a second, is that motion? We have a motion and a second, and this is to approve the resolution, refers to Section 5310. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If you've done that motion, pass it unanimously. Moving on, just returned, we have a separate resolution, Section 5311, I believe that is, and certainly you should have that attached in your package.
Community transportation to rural areas. Likewise, that's to approve, that resolution would authorize including the filing and application of that grant and authorize the probability of the kind of manager to enter into the appropriate contract.
Any questions for clarification or how to entertain a motion to approve? We have a second motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? If you're none, all in favor of motion, signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No days, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you very much.
Your time appreciated. I appreciate the job that you do. The public comment period, Mr. Tremblay, I don't believe anybody signed up for that. Either, have you had anyone come in and, is there anyone who wishes to address the board that didn't get the opportunity to sign? Have you had anybody sign up? Mr. Rock, do you have anything to say?
Already drunk.
You just don't get to say that. I won't tell them what they're doing. Anyway, we'll move on. Adjustments and approval of the amounts of the agenda. I know there's a couple of things you need to add. Worry gave each one of you, and we'll talk about this when we get to it, gave each one of you a resolution approving, potentially approve modification of funds, and you have that, should have had that paid in front of you when you got here. I think that's self-explanatory. Let's go ahead and add that. Mr. Beal, how you doing on time? You good? Good, you did your thing?
Doing real good, got 45 minutes.
Okay. You've got to drive to Raleigh's.
How you under him, man, see if he likes to drive.
Let's go ahead and add that. That would be the loan modification. Let's see, whoa, that was already on there, right?
Under 10A. Well, it's sort of 10A.
10A, so just make a note, that is 10A.
There's actually two resolutions that make me.
Yeah, so we'll, 10A, 10A A1.
Just for your information, you've had a resolution in the package that addressed both the QZAP as well as the bond issue that you talked about by last issue. Taking a little different correction in our recommendation, I'm going to create those separately, so there's QZAP resolution and then there's also a loan modification.
And that's what you didn't have in the package, gentlemen.
Yes, and those will be in lieu of the resolution you did.
And we'll discuss that when we get to it, just so you know that's coming up. Let's see, Jack, I know you had a couple of things that you wanted to add to the agenda.
We did. Mr. Chairman, I think the Senator by a copy of the agreement, the Department of Transportation concerned, the Ford Bridge, again, for a while, for some time now, and they've asked for a free for the requirements of the county, I can ask Ford, and they've had that bridge before. After it turned over to county, given the condition towards Turnover County, I think their resolution that they set forth from Ron versus offers covers all of them. So we'll ask for Ford to consider approving, authorizing us to enter, to transfer that bridge to the county, those conditions outlined in that resolution set forth by the DOT. We don't really get ready to change the DOT, so if you don't do it before the change, then you'll have to start all over. The other thing is, we've had folks who've worked with the county on the art matters of recreation projects twice in time, and we've got some handouts here for you. The company has been working with us, this Alliance Consulting Engineers, comes over the name of Michael Boyd, and all the family have worked on the layout of the ball field, etc., worked with Set Adams on our getting prepared, we're submitting an application to a park recreation trust fund grant for half a million dollars. Also, we do our base fund statements we have had for the building and supporting the project. So we're asking for Ford to give us authorization to go and enter a contract with Alliance Consulting to cover the expenses that are associated with that total amount of that contract, $27,900 to the estimate, when I was appropriate, that is to cover the costs associated with acquiring and building that recreation project.
Gentlemen, if you would add, we have that topic, we'll make it 10C, McCoy Bridge and the new business, 10B, I think it's Ollion's.
Alliance.
Alliance.
And along with that, Mr. Chairman, we also have reported amendments that the board authorized us to proceed with the application for the park recreation trust fund grant. The state office said you have that entered. State folks that even have that, um, entered, amended somewhere in the board's, approved us to enter that application, so that discussion.
We'll, we'll make that, uh, we'll make that T N E, we call that park recreation.
The, uh, the other item is, uh, you all, if you anywhere, the county purchased the, uh, building down here on Palmer Street and, um. This is an area outside there.
The yellow building.
The yellow, I call it the yellow. It's not yellow anymore, but it used to be.
They were yellow.
We're, we're, we're close to being finished with all renovations down there. I think the driver's license office, uh, is pretty much finished now, so they're working on getting our phones and getting the rest of the line. But the rest of the building is completed and we need to go ahead and get the furniture for that building. Few original appropriations for that did not include any furniture for that building. We've gone through the permanent, but the first against what is going to be necessary for the furniture stuff building for the sheriff's office. All, the entire building will be the sheriff's office when they set another one in the corner, uh, office on four levels with the driver's license office. So, uh, working with the consultant, uh, we'll need to spend, say, around sixty four, around around the all sixty four thousand dollars, uh, for furniture to allocate that complete building for use as a sheriff's office. We'd ask you to consider that, the appropriation, the management allows to do that, or complete that building, have it ready to go, open by the first year.
We make that ten, under new business, ten F. Furnishings for the sheriff's office. That is.
As I said, the only other, the only other thing we have in store here on the channel is the life of the project, they can keep it projected to you later. We'll need to be, uh, we need to see a preparation to go the rest of that, we'll, we'll cover that when we get to that topic. The only other thing that I had, Mr. Chairman, closer, we do need to, we do need to have a closed session, county attorney for attorney client privilege, concerning legal matters, pardon, pardon our attention. And we need to have a conversation with attorney.
Attorney client. Okay, we do have a closed session, I, I have a number thirteen, just letting you know we will. Do have a request, our attorney. There will be one item that you possibly lack.
And, and the only other item I had under your dissent agenda, I have to make that public help, building collection policies and schedules. We'd like to take that off of the senate, do that for January.
Remove the eleven F. Okay, gentlemen, with those, uh. We'll change this.
I'd spoke with you now. I'd like to have just a little bit of time to discuss the order, which one is the, from the attorney question, the Jordan eleven F.
Okay.
Paying.
You didn't just any action there, did this information?
I just.
Okay. We, we. Page your membership.
Additional funds and additional.
All right. Motion to approve the agenda with changes to this, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the, uh, noted additions and a couple of deletions. Any discussion about the agenda? If not, all in favor, signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that motion passes. Okay, and reports and presentations, we have Erica Brown. Brown is, Erica is with, uh, Martin Starms and Associates, and she's here for the presentation of her comprehensive annual financial report. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, here.
What do you think? I want to start by thanking you, Commissioner, for allowing me to be here tonight and reviewing your, um, your annual financial report and financial statements. And thank you for allowing us to continue to serve as your office. We appreciate that relationship. We did issue an unqualified audit opinion and in layman's terms, it's the clean opinion, the best opinion that you can get. There were no findings or question false or any material internal control weaknesses. And that is, um, as it relates to your grants, your federal and state grants, there were no questions false there. Your report has been submitted and approved by the local government commission, and I believe you have your final copies. And I want to thank this time, I thank the way in for staff, for all their hard work and being prepared for us. We really appreciate that, makes our job a lot easier. Mention that, and remind you that this presentation is mainly for your general fund only, and it's as of June thirtieth, two thousand twelve. I'd like to talk a little bit about the, the audit process. A lot of times there's some misconception that we're, we're only here once or twice a year and we're in and out and, and that's all we do. So I just wanted to explain that process a little bit. We work air round with the finance office, although you only see us once or twice a year, we're in constant contact, we read your board minutes every month. Um, and we're continuing to be planning and looking at changes to grants and debt and, and any items of that age that come up within the county. And we come out and perform interim procedures only around the springtime, and this is where we do our compliance testing with your grants and we do our internal control testing. And we come out and do what we call final fieldwork, and then it's around September, kind of spring. And this is where we do our financial statement analysis and we took the other financial statements. This slide here shows you a summary of the general fund for two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve. I would like to note that this does include transfers. Our revenues increased about six point nine percent or two point five million dollars from the prior year. And expenditures increased five point seven percent or two point two million dollars from the prior year. And we'll look at this in a little bit more detail. Fund balance, I want to talk about that for a minute. Fund balance serves as a measure of the county's financial resources available. If you take your assets, less your liabilities, what is left over is your fund balance. And there are five classifications of fund balance. Non-spendable, and these are items that are not in cash form, such as your prepaid or your inventory. Restricted, restricted fund balance is restricted by external sources such as laws or your grant force. Committed and assigned are very similar, but committed, um, is internal constraints at the highest level, which is the board. They do not expire and they require our board action to undo. And then what is left over is the unassigned fund balance, and that has no external or internal constraints. Available fund balance, available fund balance is defined by the local government commission and is calculated by taking your total fund balance, less your non-spendable, which again is prepaid or inventory. Less your stabilization by state statute, and this is state law, so it's not available. And that gives you your available fund balance, so let me hear that term, that, where that calculation is coming from. And this calculation is utilized as a basis for comparing you to other units and calculating your fund balance percentages at the local government commission. And this slide shows us making counties have available fund balance for two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve. That non-spendable amount of two hundred and nine thousand dollars includes ninety thousand dollars inventory, about hundred and twenty thousand dollars of prepaid. And you have your stabilization by state statute of three point three million, which is basically your annual. So that gives us an available fund balance of seventeen point nine million dollars, an increase of one point one million over the prior year. And this increase in available fund balance is due to a fund balance increase and also a decrease in the state statute, which is a decrease of one super. And that affects the calculation. This slide's trans list your total fund balance for general fund for the past three years. As you can see, it has increased from two thousand eleven to two thousand twelve, about two point one million dollars. And this does include your transfers in and transferred out of the general fund. And this is your available fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures and transfers out. The local government commission recommends an eight percent minimum, and they consider that to be one month's worth of fund balance. You have a little over five months worth of fund balance, an increase of about half a percent over the prior year. These next couple of slides will look at your revenues. My chart shows us, um, your revenues for the general fund, and the top three revenues are seventeen percent and local option sales tax at fourteen percent. And those top three make up ninety percent of the general fund revenue. We'll look at these top three in a little more detail. Your abhorrent taxes increased just about ten thousand dollars, um, or less than one percent. I did, um, I did want to mention that for fiscal year two thousand twelve, the collection rate was ninety six point three eight percent. And last year it was ninety six point seven five percent. So that was just a slight decrease of point three seven. Restricted in our governmental revenues, these are your grant revenues, and these increased one point six million dollars, or almost twenty eight percent. And this is an increase due to grant funding. I want to make sure that I mentioned, and you'll see this on the expenditure side as well, that one point three million dollars of this is due to an increase in the daycare subsidy, which our payments pass through the county. So you'll see that on that, that big spend on the expenditure side as well.
Look, we don't believe that, it looks like we increased our budget, we really did, it's just passed, it's just passed.
It just passed through the. Uh, and there was also a transit grant received, which was an elderly disabled grant, two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. Local option sales tax increased fourteen percent or seven hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. And without getting into too many accounting terms here, I did want to note that your true increase in the prior year was only eight percent. The reason why this looks higher is, um, we're trying to get your sales tax in line for the true twelve months during that fiscal year. Because at last time, uh, we accrued extra half a month this year, I'm sure. And so when we get to fiscal year twelve thirteen, we'll be back to the, the true twelve months, um, of the sales from July two thousand thirteen to June fourteen. And I guess thirteen, fourteen. So thirteen will have an extra half a month, so from thirteen, we'll be on the right track. So it has increased some, but there is an extra half a month.
The sales tax, they're new, yeah.
Eight percent, correct. Eighty percent.
Right, true increase.
Right.
Which is a good.
That's interesting. This slide shows us your top, um, three expenditures for your general fund, public safety at twenty seven percent, human services at twenty six, and education at twenty one. And those three together comprise about seventy four percent of your general expenditures for the general fund. Human service expenditures increased four point six million dollars, or almost twenty percent, and again, this was mainly related to that daycare payment. Public safety expenditures increased about, uh, two point eight percent from the prior year. And this was due to an increase in salaries and fringe benefits due to a new employee, as well as pay increases ranging from three to five percent. We also had some vehicles purchased for about ninety one thousand dollars in two thousand twelve that were not purchased in the prior year. And education expenditures, these increased two point six percent, and this increase was, um, due to capital for schools. We budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and only actually spent two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. None of that was provided in the prior year. Now this slide, um, is related to your capital project fund for education expenditures. That increased one point five million dollars to twenty three percent, and this was due to construction on the, um, I don't know, Valley Elementary School. And then switching gears just for a minute, I have one slide about the solid waste fund, which is your enterprise fund. We have cash, GAAP basis net income, which is your total net income. Your cash basis net income, required debt service, cash flow operations, and unrestricted net assets. And all of these increased over the prior year. And there's a lot more detail in the financial statements for this, but I wanted to note that the, the cash basis net income, the main difference is there, that that does not include depreciation and net dividends. And then in summary, I just wanted to guide you to look at your financial statements, the management discussion and analysis, which we do on page three. That gives a great summary and financial highlights, reasons for increases and decreases similar to what we went over. It also gives you a look forward to the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, the financial highlights. That's a great place to look to get a summary, and I don't worry that we'll look forward. Thanks for any questions you may have.
Mikey, you also tell us how your business has changed too? Your audit business has changed too. Well, you have, you're, the religion, you're a whole lot, we just have the M V P audits about.
Okay.
Like you having the right audits different.
Yes.
You have the insurer audits different.
Correct.
And that's constantly more money, because she don't act as long as I know. And, uh, but the audit world has changed too.
Oh, no less, James, there's a lot more, um. We have to do peer review every two years, we have, um, other auditors that come in and audit us, and, and it's hard to, it's hard for us easy to come out and look at the numbers and write up this report with all of all the things, or assess that and things like that. That has changed. Keeps us busy.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll just say one thing, while I've got a chance here, we really appreciate, um, be it on audit, or in work, over the past several years. And I know we do probably more in this one county office and state, or maybe other one. So they have a lot to look at, very few that you probably want to pay off, people are doing exactly. But, uh, generally speaking, I think the county can be proud of the financial stability that we have. And we've been able to hold a line on expenditures, it's just all from the five. On balance and go, probably have increased taxes, we've been able to go to a line on expenditures, and so, uh, I think, uh, I get the fact of audit from the actual financial director staff is really, they take the evidence of the county and appreciate.
I appreciate the staff, being well prepared, really, um, they great.
We don't just do an audit report, it's a comprehensive annual financial report, it's a lot more information than just an audit report. And, uh, the county has got the certificate for achieving in financial reporting, we've gone through our comprehensive annual financial report for many years, more than sixteen or seventeen years.
We'll be applying for this. This is my first, after, so we will be applying for this certificate for this.
No doubt we'll get it again, and, uh, there's, there's still one more place, but on the wall and angle.
Can you pass kind of copy of the, um, the question?
I have a copy, try to copy with me before you.
We get email.
Okay.
Just contact over and shoot me. Okay, thank you. Eric, appreciate that. Very much. I want to mention somebody we should have done this year announcements, but, um, one thing that, uh, we do each year, everybody will take a copy and pass that and then pass the, 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 down to the, uh, media. We have several areas of the county that, that obviously we're very interested in knowing what's going on and, and, uh, we have a commissioner assigned to, to these. And I have, uh, hearing the media, I have spoken to each commissioner personally, and, uh, we've gone through and tried to match commissioners with their area of interest. Make the areas they're expertise, et cetera. And these, we'll call these the liaison assignments, and this is for two thousand thirteen, technically, so we'll call this a working copy. Gentlemen, if you see anything on there that you want to change or that I missed, miswrote, or whatever, uh, please let me know, we can make, we can make appropriate changes. A lot of these, uh, as you know, are not very active. There's, uh, several of them, for example, on the second page, Commissioner Beal's had, I guess, even on the board, that we left that way, that do not take a great deal of time. Some of these do take a great deal of time. Couple of things worth noting, Commissioner Pepperd was on the Air Force Authority, and we've asked Commissioner Tate to take that, and requested that, and they, uh, were very eager to have him to state this. Their liaison, and that's a very active, uh, board. Also, we asked, uh, Commissioner Haven to join E D C. He's involved in business, probably a good match for that, and so he, Commissioner Beal would love to be representative of E D C. Asked, uh, Commissioner Haven, uh, very busy board, the health board, and many of you know, he has a lot of expertise in that area. So we've asked him to serve on, on the health board, appreciate his willingness to do that. Appreciate his willingness to do that. And also, and some of those are on the second page, there are several related committees that so and so forth, so. And also the solid waste advisory committee, there's issues permanent for solid waste which we probably got to deal with in the next month, certain year, that's an important committee and Commissioner Haven has agreed to take that. Other than that, for the others, it's sort of a lot of what we had last year, but anyway, if there's any changes you want to make to that, if I read anything down wrong, it's okay. I think if I talk to Jack, I think he'll take it. Mike, you want to make a note, which is two representatives, child and family council, just strike that and make it, just have the two representatives all, same thing with the house, have a trust force, Commissioner Haven. Any other changes you guys, if you're, I don't know what you would change. Yeah, Jimmy, his request would be, in fact, it's a liaison to the family board and Commissioner Haven, who attended a lot of those meetings and one of those, I want him to be a liaison way on the phone that he was already agreed to be and will liaison, but I guess that's probably the end as well, so you would want to put back that, but prior conversation factor I had this time, we'll add you to that. Anything else, just feel free to give me a call and make changes as we go. Under old business, David, we have the NC DOT traffic control.
Can we ask the board for approval for the professional service agreement for Mr. Teague, engineering, to hire a contractor to finish the project that we started on the highway? We started a project in two thousand. When we reviewed the EMS, brought it over to that area that you know, one of the, there was concern with the traffic to intercept and, along and, to control that light for EMS, send out any traffic, it was pretty brutal. As we know, one of us, no longer there, as of right now, traffic is not as bad, but hopefully it's, there's very soon, as you know, everybody's going there, we don't know what's happening. We've invested seventeen thousand dollars, seventy thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars just for, in the project. It's going to take a thousand, we've got thirteen thousand dollars to complete it. The engineer has done the studies and done the drawings on this, says that if it's not acting upon fairly quickly, the DOT will at some point come back and say, it's no importance of the original work of the man who brought it. All the engineer would have to do, done again, would cost us the original seventeen thousand again, so. Completing this project, as I say, I'd say, we're coming in real into what we assumed it was going to be.
Mr. Man, would you like to share with us the first number that you knew were given?
It was about forty thousand dollars, it was something around eight or nine.
Eighty-two thousand?
Yeah. The odd thing about this is, they all go, get it designed and get it approved by the state, but it costs to actually put it in, so we don't have a choice on that. The man got that part done, so all the stuff now is, is to get it connected, so we start using it and like David said, hope that, you know, we get some more business out there, some more traffic out there in the old Walmart shopping center, but we've been able to work around it so far, but it would be a relief, a little bit of management to have that switch in our EMS base and they got an emergency call, they can hit the button, turn the lights green, so they don't have to trouble getting out at all on EMS.
What that does is gives you control of the red light.
To a certain extent. What it would do is as soon as they click that button, DOT won't allow it to just change to green for its traffic. It just had churn, churn and the traffic on four lane was going, it turned back to ready again, it would have an emergency. So what Dave's saying, in their schematic, is we push the button, depending on where the cycle of that stop light is. If it's lost, most likely speed it up, give everybody a few more seconds or a few less seconds to change, then it'll come back to green and then it'll hold that green for a certain designated amount of time. So it will cycle through, it's a divisional cycle, it's definitely a little faster, just like the garage.
It's very simple, yeah, just like we put on store owners, we're not going to use it on a daily basis, we'll use it as an emergency, if there's, if there's one alarm, they're not going to use it.
Right.
We're going to change the red light.
Right. So. So this, this one to be going, still a bit confusing, Mr. Chairman, on what those, what do we have to say on time? What will be of that?
We've already paid them.
That was in person.
Costs and so forth.
Are we done with them?
I think, yes, I think we've paid everything, other than seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars, we've already paid, we've paid the state the design fee and all that stuff and our consulting fees and so forth, so the only, except twelve thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars plus maybe about a hundred dollars from the rest of our in the building is for, well, who put this all together to have a company come in and actually install the system. So all the permits and all the other fees have already been paid by the state, almost, well, almost seventy thousand six hundred.
So running, what's left is twelve which is for the installation. What kind of warranty is deep about it?
I have not seen one thing. I do have, the only other documentation I do have is where he did, go out and get three bids, but we were asked to get three bids from another contractor and this was the oldest bid.
As it gets out of adjustment, as these things will, is this over him going back to that old piece?
It's my understanding that because it is a DOT switch and that they have approved the design of the construction of this switch, that once it's installed into their system, DOT needs to maintain. And I would say they could not recommend our bill, but they should maintain all the workings of the switch at the line.
Is that switch located at the hall?
Where is it? The physical button will be located in the hydraulic base, which is a secure site. And it will be an manual button, it won't be anything automatic. Because when they get the call for emergency, they may not be at that building, so on the only time we ever need to use it is if anyone was in that building and so as they get the call, they're stuck in that type of system.
And then the range, if that's setting is in time, from the end to the max, depending on the rotation of the truck.
Down the seconds you're looking at, it's, if it, if a light had just turned red and you have to cycle all the way around and come back, and anything, it's in there.
And. But then if you get a lot of traffic, it could be two sides.
Right, and what we're, what our plan is, is by not turning it to a flashing light or something, a turning green, so that you have the normal slow traffic out in the corner. Our ambulances has been told not to turn on lights or shine in the access from our building to the highway, because that just, when there are cars there, it creates a traffic hazard. We will open up the light to green, get the normal traffic out of the way, we'll follow it to the corner and then we'll turn on it. Two minutes doesn't sound like a lot.
Unless you have an army.
If you're going to the furthest parts of our town, which we know we, from the black lines, a long way, two minutes, we can't really gain that much time and save the job that way, but if we were to have emergency, in town, two minutes, two minutes is a, we can, we can.
And the reason DOT doesn't pay for this, we're asking for this, the barriers and the norm, what they pay.
You're asking to pay for it, you're, we're asking to pay.
Yeah, we had several. This was before that time.
The reason DOT won't pay for it is because DOT, DOT was afraid to step in the press.
Yeah.
Let it push this.
So you went to him back in two thousand?
Oh, in eleven and.
And I remember some discussions that we started this process.
We took it to the RPO, we took it, hit all boards down and they probably do have it for us. If they give it to us, they use other examples of their works, and people would request the same, municipalities and our counties. So I would, I'd come away with them, that they won't set the pressure to pay.
They did, and I think that they showed that by saying, well, it cost you eighty or ninety thousand dollars to do that, making, without, without, no big idol, as you pointed out, it's about a third of what they said was going to cost, the benefits, saving one life or, you know, it's different.
And this reminds you the reason, by moving out there, we estimated at times, it would save automatically forty-five minutes on a call, get the ambulances through town from the old, from the old station just because of the traffic problem on Main Street.
David, this is your recommendation for something?
Yes.
Jack, do you mind?
We'll, we'll, we'll check, see, make sure we have enough, thanks for my, for doing this.
There was some of the money originally came from, the fifty percent fund that was number one funds, there was in two thousand, eleven, twelve, there was, not mandatory, but an allowance from number one board that allowed counties that had a fund balance in the number one to take fifty percent of that and use it for any public safety.
Well, we're going to be asking for all of that, we'll put it back in this kind of black deal, that's one thing that we all work on.
And that's one of some of the original problems.
We're asking for it all back to Dr. Malone's.
Correct. You're right. Just, just a point of order. When Jack says contingency, that actually budgeted money for things that either are unexpected or something like this, it's two and a half years old, that comes up in the budget year, when we say undesigned fund balance, we're talking about different, different pot money. This is actually, this will come out of budgeted money, this just doesn't kind of line out and taps to, or specific expenditures taps to it, as a small amount as far as, and it's about one percent, I guess, one, two percent.
We, we, I think our budget, you know, forty man on range, I think we have three thousand dollars owed and that's, if our budget's over.
There's less, less. Anyway, that is, it's part of budget, it's just not designated until we, it's a vote.
Just clarification of the, can't be spent on our budget.
The twelve thousand six forty-eight is only twenty-five hundred for the control circuit at that.
We need to add that five hundred.
So we need actually, or eight thousand.
I got that figured from Mr. Teague, who is the engineer that gave us the process earlier. He said that basically they'll bring two buildings, but they, their contractors not allowed to go in that building, so they'll bring two buildings and then count, they'll bring in the, the process.
So David, your request is for thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars. Do you have any questions, Mr. Key, questions for clarification?
It's ironic in a way that the building out there was, the party was originally given to the category EMS base and we used it back years ago for the second service area and that's probably back to the EMS base, which is what was really intended for it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we, we approve the allocation, the fitness project, we will work on all the costs, we don't have to come and take, you know, we have no doubt about that. And that track, and I think that will be, always be, less in the place, you've got a lot of other businesses out there, just the business up, it comes through our, we have, we've had to leave it for a while. So the only caveat I put in my motion is that I would request that Mr. Key receive documentation of a warranty on, on these projects. I put that caveat in my motion, Mr. Chairman.
And you, your motion is, please take that from the page you line out.
Competency of thirteen thousand dollars.
Do we have a second for the motion? Do we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'd say we want to, I want to, like, get off the floor, because saving a life, they would, I saw the way they're calling, I just can't understand why they're like that much more. I don't know, it's going to be, with.
Calculations.
It's better than the.
Is there any, what do you think?
It's sort of, it's sort of, it's, yeah, for what you're. And that's what they assume, for seventeen grand with hoop bills, I'm saying.
That's right.
It's not money, it's always great. It's true. But you're right, we can get, I can get around men quickly.
Any discussions of motions? All the favorite motions, see what I'm saying, I, I oppose, that motion passes. Do you need that?
I hope that's the commonest vote, so we can, the whole, it's like.
Well.
Yeah.
You can, for these little regulations to go along.
Oh, that last.
The next thing, Tommy Jenkins, we have resolution and lease for X currency trade advisors at the Business Development Center. They were actually, of course, tenants from August two thousand eleven. We had some paper rotations, we had my supervisor, the actual lease still runs from August twenty way up to August. They've been good tenants, they've actually, in person, there's just one person I saw that they're, and it was probably unfortunate, they wouldn't be using significantly for other purposes. So there's actually a resolution for surplus property and a lease of, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Chairman, in your package, you were given a copy of the resolution, hopefully, we'll note to you that the resolution that Jenkins is presenting this evening is a revised resolution which has a date on it. The resolution in the package might note the first figure of the number that calls Redwood Plan to bring it up. Provide that.
Do you have any questions for clarification from Mr. Jenkins or a motion to approve that lease being ordered?
How they do it.
Go ahead.
How they do it.
They, they, they've actually hired one, one and a half. They're working back to the car. I don't know.
Hey, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, it's just not half, it's not a live person.
One of my kids sent a little, hey, look at that.
It's a half a business.
Is both reviewed and I'll make a review, a review of the, of the.
Yes, that's one thing, we've got, we've actually got a second meeting now for EDC that reviews. Uh, yes, that's one thing we've got, uh, we've actually got a second meeting now for B B N T that reviews these, uh, applications. And they actually, each year, our motions from Commissioner Hagen to, to, for free that.
We have a second. We have a second, Commissioner Tate, any discussion regarding the lease? Here's none, all in favor of second, I'm saying I, I oppose. That motion passes. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it very much. The, uh, under ten A, resolutions, uh, authorizing negotiations, installing financing. And if you would, gentlemen, take that, uh, resolution you're handed, you should, you should have planned it for the pot. And then, uh, just a little, little background, uh, Chris Higgins, the reinsurance company, kind of debt, trying to get their debt service down. And a couple of months ago, I guess, uh, Mr. Tate came to come in, we talked about our largest debt the county has is sixteen million dollar loan, which is for the, uh, that is for...
The U.
And it's frank.
No.
Not me, sorry. Um, so it felt like four point five nine percent was great, felt like we could do better. Before we discussed that, she came back, I guess it was last month, you had, uh, thought of a suggestion, maybe build a bond market for that. Couple of, you get, at least down into threes and this kind of thing. Anyway, so it, it changed a little bit. I met with Lori and Jack last week and, and we have this presentation. Lori, you see what this is and how, how it works?
As Mr. Corbin said, the last four meetings were approved for us to go forward with, uh, two items. One being the one point five million QZF for a privilege of Highland School. The other being, um, going out to the bond market, issuing limited obligation bonds, that amount of sixteen million dollars. And at that time, you know, it was a pretty attractive rate based on her bond market rate and threat. So, um, after those, that meeting, Chris Alexander, first try advisor, he contacted Louis Lewis of B B N T to try to inquire, couldn't they waive the one percent prepayment penalty, which was in the contract? So Louis contacted me, you know, and said, you know, understand you're going out to the bond market, you know, um, really thankful you're leaving us. Uh, let us see what we can do, right? So, um, the sixteen million that we currently have outstanding in the town is what's probably a non-impact qualified rate, meaning it's taxable. Meaning it's more higher. So initially, because I had, you know, confidence in them back in April of this year, say, you know, can we modify this rate for them? By the time he came in with a lesser rate, but it wasn't as attractive as one, like, again, it's probably taxable. So they got creative and said, okay, what can we do to make this transaction through a non-taxable, non-qualified rate? Um, for those of you that may not be familiar, in a calendar year, a county may borrow about ten million dollars and it will be qualified and become as bank qualified, non-taxable, which is a lower entry rate. Well, currently in, in calendar twenty-twelve, the county has only issued more than a half million of the debt. So we have eight and a half million capacity that we can count as bank qualified debt. So they came back and offered up, and we talked to the L G C, you know, so they'll have to talk to their intent. So of the sixteen million, we're going to modify the rate. In December, it closes next week, you know, contingent on the approval tonight. Um, that four point five nine percent, they're offering a rate of two point six one percent.
Well, they offered two point six eight.
Two point six seven.
Two point six seven.
And then we've got it real down a little bit to two point six one. So, um, and then... Yeah, that would look pretty good. So, um, so again, we'll have two transactions, we'll have the eight and a half million in December, um, the remaining balance in January, um, because for calendar year twenty thirteen, you know, um, of course, because of the, your, your ten million starts to override. And currently on the horizon, we know we have the one point five million QZF, you know, that hopefully will get issued in twenty thirteen. So that leaves us eight and a half million capacity for, again, for the remaining assets. So bottom line is, um, we ran an analysis of, of Chris, I should say, Chris Alexander, first time he ran an analysis with the locked-in guaranteed rate. And you guys understand, two point six one is fixed, you know, it's not variable. It's good for the remaining life of this loan.
No points.
No points, no prepayment penalty. This rate, this rate is good until we pay off the debt in July of twenty twenty-eight. So, you know, almost sixteen, sixteen million dollars, fifteen and a half.
And one thing to mention too, gentlemen, we thought about going to bond market. That would save some significant money. Costs of doing that was about thirty thousand dollars to do the, those transactions to bond.
So you could be liable.
Well, well, time you count the, there was a twelve thousand dollar fee on top of that, but thirty, thirty thousand. We were the bond fees on top of it.
We were like about two hundred and fifty to three hundred seventy.
But we were hoping to save, we, we were looking at saving eight hundred thousand, you know, a little more. So with that said...
Another thing that you're, you're looking at with this rate that they're going to be, you're not, I mean, you might potentially do better in the bond market, but you might not. You're, you're getting a fixed arrangement here in place in lieu of an unknown, I mean, or possibly known.
But just to kind of give you a comparison of the one with B B N T and this fixed rate guarantee that makes fifteen and a half years versus the bond market, which carries risk, we have that market risk. Uh, with B B N T is two point six one percent, we can save two million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's our net present value savings, and I'm rounding here, two million one hundred and fifty thousand, okay? Based on December sixth, we ran this analysis, based on markets as of that day, the bond market was running about two point four six. So just fifteen basis points less than what we're guaranteed lock-in rate. Those net present value savings are two million two hundred and fifteen thousand. So the difference between the two, it's only sixty-five thousand dollars, net present value savings. So again, you know, my recommendation is to lock in this deal with B B N T. You know, who knows what's going to happen with the fiscal referendum? Um, you know, we, we want, we go to the bond market in March. So, you know, you're looking at, you know, two and a half months away, you know, what's going to happen. And we can lock in and save the, you know, this amount of, you know, next fifteen and a half years. So that's my recommendation is for you to, there's two resolutions for you to consider, I. One being the one-page resolution, which this one says, yes, B B N T, we won't accept your rate modification amount, two point six one percent. The other, I think Chester laid your table, is a six-page one. This one is for the QZF. Originally in the packet, the, the one in the packet covered the QZF as well as sixteen million on the bond market. So, you know, if you guys are in agreement, then this resolution for the QZF, this resolution for the modification. Two separate actions on two separate resolutions.
And gentlemen, I did have the opportunity to meet with Lori and with Jack and Lori this last week. And I, I concur with Lori that, that we should do this. Uh, the savings to the county is two point one million dollars. And that's, that's guaranteed.
As a present, I have a...
Present value.
Stream of payments, say, for probably more like...
Two point four.
Yeah, the stream of payments is two million four point six one thousand.
So the net, net savings to the county over the life of the loan is two point four million dollars.
That's the stream of payments. If they discount that back, present value, they can, they have real savings.
Now, Louis, what is not included here is, he had mentioned it, so it don't have to miss, there was no prepayment penalty.
The only, I, I will mention that it's going to be sixty-nine hundred under our D V S on his side. That's our own cost.
Oh, how many million?
That's minimal.
I was going to say, if we don't do this...
Second, second, we're...
We have a motion and second to, uh...
This is for the B B N T resolution, it's a make clear, because we have two separate...
Package resolution accepting the two point six one million dollars and saving taxpayers two point one million. All in favor of the motion, signify the saying, I, I oppose. That motion passes. Well, thank you very much. Then, yeah, and let me say this, you know, this, this is all because we asked. And it's all because we said, hey, we think we're doing a little better and we're going to go, we're going to go shopping. And they came back and said, I didn't, I don't, Lori, I'm going to leave this.
And Louis Lawrie's worked at Lake County, how many years?
I worked with several, I guess, for a year.
Please, please.
I've got a loan firm related to Louis as well, I've worked with him since back in nine, I guess about nineteen six.
That word Lori includes Trey.
Actually, I think, I think Louis has done all work, he's had, he's done all work, he's had, uh, two, two.
He offered the two point six seven and, and I think he already... You, you think I'm... You think that two point six one, but on, on sixteen million dollars, I love it. So thank you, Lori.
The other, I still don't, oh man, I think we should have one, uh, in the half of that, we've saved tax pay, that much. It's good to see you telling that, though.
Is that?
Yes, we have another resolution in January for the one million. But it's combined.
That's a total savings, total savings.
Sixteen. We'll have to rest that.
Just we have to split it into two transactions, do that non-qualified, you know, taxable.
We'll do that in our January meeting and then we'll, we'll close on...
Yeah, we'll have two closes.
About two clubs.
It's all medicated, uh, for free club, you know, you're free club, you forget.
And also, like at your table, I have took the letter from Louis and it, it explains in the letter, the two point six one is good. Uh, you know, it talks about funding one in December and then the other, not later than forty-five days after its date. That gives us plenty of time in January to close the second.
We should be able to do it at our, our January meeting, close after that.
Yes.
Gentlemen, you have in front of you two, we, we approved, I guess, last meeting, the, uh, the QZF. Uh, this, this is, uh, the, uh, the money for Highland's renovation. And I know all of you have looked at, this, this resolution is for that, Chester.
That the call for a public hearing to occur on eighth of January and advertise that and do a generally authorized county to, to shop for the, for the, the dates.
This authorizes, uh, me as finance director to go forward with the L G C application for the QZF. It has to be for the L G C.
Motion to approve, uh, let Lori go ahead and be, uh, making application for the L G C.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
That's just a motion to proceed, is to approve this resolution, which does several things, including but not limited authorizing the application for the L G C, shopping, financing, uh, calling a public hearing on the eighth of January and, uh, advertising public hearing, holding lines up.
And it'll, it'll still take, uh, oh, another action, but we'll...
Yes, most definitely.
Any other discussions of motion?
I'll just a note too, sorry, for Paul's sake, um, this being a QZF, we should be able to, we're seeing that for it. It will be a taxable transaction, but with the way the government's operating, it should be able to get, it'll be the kind of thing for the management to have paid the end of the month, then I'll follow, and each pay rate will be charged.
While we've discussed on this, we delayed this a little bit, uh, houses needed these renovations for some time. They've had a, county had a, Jim Basing was building in two thousand and thirty, and there was a, uh, two point eight, two point eight million. And that's paid off one more time and it was negated. So we didn't want to have to put any money for that, so we, I guess, we backed that word, grew their feet a little bit and, and to get this, and it'd be a zero percent interest with the subsidy whenever. And, uh, and more than pay for this, we'll pay for the housing.
Would you take some, I understand you did, everybody looking for the renovation.
Is there a decision?
No. Was I talking to you, sir?
Don't be additional cost and over walking payback.
Who's that, Max?
Jim of the first.
I have a list of renovations anymore than that, let me show you.
Were you voting that?
Any other question, any other discussion? All in favor of motion, signify the saying, I, I oppose.
I'm trying to move the one I'd like to speak to, just because I've been involved in it since a kid ago. I'm worried that I don't need to give it now, but I gotta leave and we talked about the Ford Bridge a little quick.
Are you there, man? You should get big work, uh, satisfactory security issue.
Is that where we're at?
Yeah.
My little computer, I can't write all that.
With the, with the, he's outdriving for you, we'll have to send a genuine conversation. Jack, I don't think the satisfaction is secure.
Two seconds. It's, uh, it's a C D B G project, our county housing, uh, program where, uh, they have, they have, uh, a bit on keeping the property for certainly the time. After that, then, uh, C D B G vote for giving indebtedness on that, so it's formally, uh, pretty good. And I guess with it's, uh, uh, we've been notified that the, uh, that the loan has been satisfied and given. And, uh, for the C D B G debt guidelines, at least we officially approved, or at least by the four county commissioners, it's been, the county has stood, uh, stood by us to be responsible for that process and go along with the C D B G requirements were satisfied. They have been satisfied now, so, uh, thanks just to, uh, release.
This is for the residence asset.
Gentlemen, you have, copy that in your, uh, pre-packet, do we? Do we have a motion? Marvin did.
Done a lot of work on that. Thank you.
I believe we're going to make that motion.
I would stay because of the first relationship.
So you are related to it?
Yeah.
That wouldn't matter on this one. Like you have to go there.
All you're doing, all you're doing is saying that you satisfied the requirement.
Oh, okay. See, there's no, you're not, you're no...
Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion. Okay, we have a second. Motion and a second, in discussion. All in favor of say, I, I oppose. That motion passes. Uh, moving on to the, uh, the Ford Bridge, uh, and Ronnie, can you, what this has been going on for? A long time, the community down there, fathers didn't, didn't want that bridge to go away. It's been that community for a long time, so, so we've been talking to state about ways to make that happen. And they finally agreed with, with what we proposed to them, and I guess we'll, 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 we'll accept that.
Well, this, we started with the Ford Bridge probably four years ago. It's before I, and, and working on the Ford Bridge as part of that community project down there and working with the D O T. Uh, it just took some time, uh, took many meetings. And over the time, uh, I believe, Mr. Man, you agree that everything that we asked for, it took us time.
Well, we asked for some more money, then it goes in money, but it goes in bridges.
They, uh, we knew that, but we thought we'd ask.
But they did, but they actually, the thing that is, is the most efficient part is... But they did, but they actually, the thing that is the most efficient part is that the bridge has to be certified, inspected, be certified every two years. For cycles, which is eight years, before the county would have spent any money on having it re-certified, so the state would do that. Also, they were bringing up what the standards, basically, for the next bridge, can't be used for any big or traffic, I guess, that type of motorcycle, walking across, so. And as we were saying, the options, uh, presented at the time, the discussion was taking place was, we need to tear that bridge out, build another bridge twice. And folks, I never really want to keep that bridge, there's not many of those iron cross bridges that left. There's only a few in the state I think still left, so the compromise was, state said, we will build another bridge, I believe that one there, and we will maintain. And so, uh, that's actually what it comes down to. And I think that's something that most of the folks who are disagreeing with that decision, uh, are probably not a hundred percent, but most of them are probably, uh, maintain that the old bridge, that's the best bridge, and have a new bridge. The reason we need a new bridge down there is the running of our CBGs and their, our projects, so the old bridge is just, is not, we need to standard anything.
It has a three ton limit, the path it has, that is nothing. I'm, I'll bring some steel beams to our, or we'll try to grind for somebody, that'd be ironic, but they can't cross what we've been, just taking through road trees, which is a whole lot more dangerous. The job is like a half a mile from where we bring, six miles down road tree. So, uh, that, we will, the only thing else that we would be asking for, that started the agreement, that I think we can get outside the agreement, is signing. And, uh, uh, we have mentioned that, it's not part of the agreement, gentlemen, but I think you can't get the signing for the bridge. They have agreed to the bike rails, uh, and, and most everything else, but the main thing, you know, the bridge was just inspected, it passed, we're flying toward. And, uh, the bridge is in good shape, it really is, for as old as it is and what it is. With a whole more than three tons to go across the path, I don't know. I'm gonna try, I'm not, we're going to try, but, uh, but with that, Mr. Chairman, and, and, uh, and I, and you got, you know, the DOT just tipped or something, so. I must say, they did work with us well, and the community, and everybody involved, on, uh, on preservation of the Ford Bridge, and, and they act appreciative.
Yeah, and so, it's a good way to use down there, doesn't it? We've actually, uh, we're supposed to.
So I'd make a motion with that, here you are, about the signings, and we would be asking for the, that we accept executive summary submitted by the DOT, uh, in the best, in the best for an ownership of the bridge to make a deal.
Jack, you have a second to that motion? Okay. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
The only last point is still a cost, but if this actually, you're, you're. Don't know that. I don't. The state, what we, what we hope to do is get inspection, inspection to come out. I, for eight year cycle, they'll do it for eight years, the state has agreed to do it for eight years. And, uh, and we have to do it, what's there with two year?
And that's true, it's made it every two years, the government's still signed, so it's eight years, and after that, it still has to be stated, and you use the bridge. And what you would probably do is just.
But the inspection standards do change, and because it is now, as though we're tracking, it's only foot tracking and bicycle. So, it, it, you know, approximately, I would call about hundreds of dollars. It's not very expensive about that, according, according to Brian Burkes, not, I don't know.
It was less, it was less to have it inspected, wasn't painted. And I would think that's what they're, what they were wanting to pay for painting.
In eight years, I would hope that, and I believe today, we've got to pay it, the community was planning to fill up with some funds to get through that.
I think that's really expensive.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Well, I think we're rich. They said another way.
I don't want to put the county, that's the only thing we're having to pay for the money. Um, I stand with more, I stand here, I hope for the voting, so we can vote, let the community to push more.
Well, actually, we can't commit eight year down the road, we can't commit other people to do it. We know we got it for eight years, and that's, we can't, we have another board to pay for it, another board may decide on buying it.
It's not, it's not worth it, so it's, uh, if, if we accept.
The DOT turns it down.
And I understand.
Thirty one thousand, whatever.
Hundred point six.
Hundred point six, I thought, if you don't do what it says to do, maintain it with this, and don't tear it down, then it's all going to be. But, there's no use in taking it if you're not going to do what it says in here, the first thing.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm getting it on the tail end of it, I mean, I read a little bit of paper, but I'm not seeing any documents for just now, because it couldn't open, so.
The, uh, the, the original idea was, uh, uh, let the county have the bridge and give us, uh, money to maintain it and take care of it, so. Well, actually, I have to do with inspections and bring it up far, it was more than the money that we would have gotten. They said, give us a bridge and that is automatically start being responsible instead of eight years down the road. So, it, it, it is actually a better, better deal than just transferring it to the county and give the county a lump sum of money to maintain it, because you probably spent all that lump sum of money just getting inspections done and having it painted, do all the things the DOT said you probably need to do, but they're not going to actually turn that bridge over to the county until the new bridge is built anyway. And the new bridge hasn't started building it, so I'm not sure what.
And we've had these discussions, Paul, we hoped that by that time, there would be some historical money, and history from, because these bridges, uh, a lot of counties have got money for this type, because there's just not enough. And, uh, between that and the community, I can't say for sure, I, I can't commit somebody else, but I believe in the eight years, that's, that's the tone. Uh, I think the expense to the county would be, would be relative to life compared to what we give.
Let me see, I have a bad bridge, I bought one.
I bought one, didn't?
We still have liability to deal with. You know, I think the bridge is certainly worth saving. The reason they're dropping the tonnage on that thing is it's in the process of deterioration. It's, it's deteriorating, and I agree with Ron Haven in saying, as this thing does deteriorate, what is the cost to the county in the future? I mean, eight years is good, yeah, we paid for it, but the cost to the county that we would incur to fix the life of that bridge, until it's time to take it out. As long as you can afford it.
That'd be for another board to decide. Hopefully, we're doing, we're doing what you, I mean, choice of it. Just have it tear it down, now.
The DOT, DOT's first choice is to tear it down.
They're just gonna tear it down.
Yeah, we'll put one out here on the green lane, it'll come and save you.
They won't, they won't build another bridge and leave that one there, the DOT won't do that, who asked?
Would an option be to remove it in a couple of pieces and?
Top to four. What's it told of?
Yeah, they, they're, they're, they were pretty, pretty, pretty hard, those, I mean, their, their option was the best thing for them to do, most optimistic way for them to do this, though they're not even a state, they don't want to do. Is just to replace the bridge at its current location. That was their most optimistic way to, if the community wanted to save the bridge, the only way to save the bridge is for somebody else to take it over. They don't have energy, nobody can do that, would be obvious to the community, or the community, the community is just not.
Could the community, actually, do that? Community development?
They could.
Was that the best, or was that an option?
Well, at this time, they don't know, that's the part down the road, they can't commit to do something like you down the road. But it's like this board can't commit to do something like, another board would write you down, so, or something like this. I think community development certainly can, a lot of organizations can. This is the only way that the state would do it.
I was, I was gonna say, the state is probably looking for, is, is like.
Especially. To be on the. Communities to help, I'm, uh, I believe, I bring the vehicle, if you get all the things we've been through, uh, you know, it's, it's community waters and the county, uh, it's, it's another preservation that we need to save. And for a very low expense amount of money.
It's like years, and they're not putting no money in. They, everybody's telling, like, huh?
Tim, we'll see him, he built two years, actually, man.
Well, they haven't built the bridge yet.
And that's your way on the inspection, I don't, I don't think that would be a huge, huge expense.
I don't know, it was cost a year, so they wouldn't tell us, they don't, they didn't let you.
It's one of the, that lot of, where it was seventeen thousand. These bridge inspections, they cheap bridge, I think that, you got to do.
But you're talking about a foot bridge and a bicycle bridge, not a tacky bridge.
Suspension.
And here it can go down to, to, to less than a ton of the height. That can be done with a two, two sixes. So, uh, so if, you know, I, I think you, I think, I don't have much inspection to call, in here, have not a clue. Right on the bridge is worth saving, if, if, if the inspection does cost money. Worth saving, it's still worth saving, for this, for this community, it's good.
So, we're, uh, we're two options, either DOT replace the bridge, or have the county take over the bridge and maintain it, and then they, they, the inspection. So, that was probably the best, the best option, that, and there were four or five options, that was the only one that seemed.
You were close, yes. Uh, so our option, I mean, I mean, it's only, they will build that new bridge, it's useless to that.
And it, we would still have a little deal around here, but it's not why we're back to the, to the, to the, to the, everything. They take this one time.
They take, they take it out.
And replace it with a new bridge. Which is what originally was gonna do, I mean, I wasn't around when it started, but that, that.
That's a good option for the community, because that's what sixty two people, so that's an option for the county, and I, I think those people in county, they don't even know where that bridge is, but I think they want to preserve that piece of history, uh, for this county for years to come, my opinion.
How would we know what it costs?
I mean, what's a car gonna cost to you?
What would I say to cars?
Well, I mean, same thing, I mean, I don't know what it's gonna cost to inspect the bridge at the end of the, nobody does.
For the maintenance?
I don't know. I mean, you can assume, anything that's old, you're gonna have to put some money in the maintenance. Now, how much, I don't know, is it ten thousand dollars a year? I don't know, I don't know how much it is. But I, I believe that it would, I think that it could, it could be too much, but I just can't see it costing a whole lot even in ten years. And I think you'll have to help from a lot of resources to do that, from the community and from this group.
Paul, call the question, gentlemen? Motion and second is to approve the executive summary.
And authorize the entry of contract.
Okay.
Think we'll be able to, is that correct? And second.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor, or in discussion, any in discussion?
I want to say this real quick, I didn't call the question. I think you want to call me.
Go ahead.
I said, I first, I would have the idea of this, but in the last one, I'm here, it's not gonna be spending anybody on it for eight years, and then two years after. And I didn't know how much means that.
All in favor of the motion, signify the saying, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion for the one, motion passes. Let's see, gentlemen, I think we added ten D, uh, collapse, uh, contract, this is the group that, uh, we've talked with, yeah, that, uh.
We're talking with, uh, Seth Adams and I'm referring to, it's on the, partner, we're talking, getting it to agree first. Seth Adams was gonna be here tonight, I called him earlier this morning, he was sick.
He called me here and said he was, he was sick.
Yeah, so, but I got him. Stay home. The, the, you'll see what you have there, it's a proposal from, from Alliance Consulting Engineers, and what they've already done, you'll see on the very back part, and that, uh, a schematic, uh, of, of the development of that property for, uh, ball fields and, uh, recreation areas and so forth. They, they've done all this, they haven't made many things to work up, but Mr. Boyd's very interested in this project, he'd like to do it. And two or three things we're gonna have to have done, we thought we could get a local person to do a, uh, a base one, uh, which we need, we're closing the property anyway, that had to have been about, but they would include, uh, in their contract, their compensation, uh, doing the base one environmental study, uh, also coordination, uh, we're asking for, uh, half a million dollars, uh, this part I would go for, uh, fifty, fifty grand on actual purchase of that property. So, we, we actually need them to help us work through the park and recreation trust fund grant, and so the cost of that would be sixteen thousand dollars. And they also have to do an environmental assessment, second, that name survey, uh, which is ninety four hundred dollars for a total estimate of, with engineering service, two twenty seven thousand nine hundred dollars. Special boys already contacted the Department of Cherokee for coastal resources, talked to Russ Towns, who is their chief, uh, in charge of, uh, of that, uh, coastal resources and so forth, and, uh, he's pretty much got, uh, the verbal, uh, support from them to go ahead and, uh, work with the county and develop this as a recreation area. They'd like to see that, and so, uh, like he actually is already scheduled, they, uh, we, uh, go, go from, uh, Cherokee, go over, walk the department, they would see if there was anything that they saw that would cause it to pop, you know, this pay, and also, most of this property's aren't been disturbed anyway, uh, with the development, they'll be, uh, got, or something, so. What we need to do is go ahead and continue with this, get the park and recreation trust fund grant, and, uh, get all the things we need to do in order to close this property, but then the assembly is something we'll approach to. So, our recommendation, uh, is to go along with this to avoiding contract, uh, by consulting, to do those things, did you see, uh, out behind on your, uh, section two? They're making a manager survey for the environmental assessment, with total cost, twenty seven thousand nine hundred dollars. And, uh, we'll authorize us to do that, we would actually, um, like to cover also that contract for consulting engineering services under the condition.
So, not, uh, even though we're, we're. What we passed, what we passed last meeting was designated money from, undesigned fund balance for purchase.
Purchase of the property, right.
You're saying?
I'm saying.
This will be out, you think that?
This is, this is, yeah. Just as, I have the calendar, since this says that professional service is same.
In shared services.
Ordinarily, you, you may want to go out for, for, for a few, so, we don't have the time to do that, it's all good to ask the board that if you, if you would approve this, uh, go ahead and prove the labor like we did last time for engineering services, and we do it on credit or activity, this company, do what they need to do, and secure the property, and to the final for that million dollars on the part of preparation.
My statute calls it seventy three thousand, the, uh, putting it out, notice it out, with labor.
So, I guess what we're asking, Mr. Chairman, is to, as you want to, uh, invoke that waiver, we're discussing parts of, uh, for our use of engineering services, this is under thirty thousand dollars, and go on, I was to contract with clients, consulting engineers, for the, uh, items outlined in their proposal, work with our, our staff, and want to complete those odds for total cost, twenty seven thousand nine hundred dollars, if we don't, and at least the best.
Jim, I, I would recommend if we, we do proceed this, we need these services completed. Gentlemen, I would recommend that we do proceed with this, we need these services completed, uh, fairly soon, we're, we're getting down to, we'll fly that part, we've got, so far, we've got sort of, uh, bridges west, mission, or former bridge today, send today, to help, to get that grant money, but we've got to get, get these steps done, and this, this firm with assistance in that application.
Very important. Their funding's, I told the chairman, so we've got to have everybody ready, going in, we're doing the opposite here.
Any, any questions about this, clarification, or?
Their services is detailed, on the compensation part, they're, they're aligned, they're, they're boundary, wastewater, uh, so, service actually, they're divided by older.
We have a lot of information already, but they went through the development of an RV park out there, we've got surveys, we've got FOFOs, we've got, uh, uh.
Rainy plains.
Some, some, I'm not sure how much, uh, they've done out there, uh, but we've got a record of everything that applied for to the building inspection department, and the county's department, health, uh, services. So, we got, we have a lot of information already, uh, actually, the, uh, company that's doing our, uh, Swiss water system, the owner of that company is the only this property, and he's, uh, trying to install an engineer, so they, they've done a lot of that stuff already, in preparation for, he uses it as a, as a, as a, as a RV park. And so, some of us will be, we already have.
We have that stuff, we don't, didn't include it here for them to provide, we have.
So, my mayor, he did the sewer water, he's giving us recognition of what that's going to be called.
Yeah, they actually had permit for separate systems out there and so forth.
Oh, okay.
Yes, a small separate system out there.
Oh, and that little key house, yeah.
Just for a small.
Will they do this for one?
And, and some of that, they've gone back, they were back, they were still working on the, the, so, we got, we got, they did some more work out there, and, and, and we scored plans, and, and, and got some permits started, and some of.
They were gonna do the RV.
But we got a lot of work, we got a lot of work.
We'll have to come and see the sewer. This, in my opinion, that will actually, will capable of helping.
I, I think the sewer system has been proved around there, it's not, it may not be, may not be sized to make full expansive park. But on the other hand, I, it's gonna take several years to grow the park, or what's on the, on the design, I think, here, so, I think if we found to grow that, that, that's one of the first things we need to do, but in order to actually acquire the property and get in line for park and recreation trust fund, we do need some assistance in putting all that together, and that's probably a good question.
And we're trying to develop, projecting costs to start phase one of this, I think, in its award.
We will talk to Lou Anne Ryan, the, uh, State Parks and Recreation Service, who actually is the mayor for the, uh, for the park and recreation trust fund money. And the maximum amount of money that you get from park and recreation trust funds is half a million dollars a year. We're gonna qualify for that one off the bat, and then get the first phase of this property. Lou Anne also told us that, that doesn't mean that's the only time you can come back to the, the dollar for dollar banks, with the size of the park develops, and next phase, and next phase, so, you can come back, and, and they like pockets like this, in order to get another financial layer of mountain, in the next phase. Depends on how extensive you wanna go with the ball fields, you can do something really, really expensive, like, uh, County or someplace like that, really, really nice ball fields, but, uh, as in our first pass, we're not doing five or six extensive, uh. We would probably start, probably start out with at least one, 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 probably the ball fields, and maybe walk the track, and then deal.
We will know what projected cost to.
Oh, absolutely, before, before you do it, be, be part of that project will come before the board, will be approved, when the appropriate money's appropriate, the cost.
I mean, all, all we've done is, we just don't have a lot, we have, how many, when?
Is the, the form of his, his restrictions on the.
In other words, the county understands. Sorry, this, this, it's not like, it's not like a conservation station or anything like that, uh, that basically, the restrictions are, we make this money, but you gotta use it within three years, uh, that's the, that's the.
And there'll be restrictions on half of you.
And, and if you.
I don't know if they're like, like, amiable to restrict the property.
No, but I, I don't, I, I don't know of any predic.
Every county has something else they have.
Once, once this property is, once this property is put into this, this will be pretty much how it's gonna be from now on. They, they have had, they have had situations in the state, I'll be honest with you, to tell you this, that where a county actually applied, or was applying for a park and recreation trust fund, they actually bought property for a park, was applying for park and recreation trust fund money, and then, uh, there was a change in the administration, the leadership on that board, and that board decided not to pursue that. And so, they, although they were qualified for park and recreation trust fund money, they didn't get it, because the board decided, well, the house, uh, they're, so. So, as long as you maintain the additional original purpose of that, I don't think there's a problem, uh, the old, uh, some of the old restrictions, like Bureau of Rural Recreation Funds, that used to be part of the Land Water Conservation Fund, uh, said you need to operate this as such for the next number of years, if they have that, I haven't seen a, 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 a great big one that happened.
And all we've done, so far, five fifty, they would, they would reimburse us two seventy-five, half of that, so, and then, beyond that, we would have some other plan, and then, then we would, we would use the rest of the half million, and then fly in, follow you for another hundred grand, you, you'll be working about it. But you'd have to have a plan, and, you know, we'd have to.
Because that's where. I've done a lot of schoolwork on that, this property, it's wet, uh, we're talking, I'm talking, I was, uh, and this one, I think this one requires serious praise and some serious criticism, because there's no outside field we have. So, it's, it's just, uh, it's just wet.
Okay, that's good. Uh, okay, gentlemen? Any more questions, or do we have a motion to approve the, uh, agreement with, uh, collapse consulting?
It's basically just a start.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad if this, this is a project that we started down the road, and it's gonna take time, and this is just the first step in, uh, securing this place, as we, I don't know of anything that this was done in, in recently that's stirred much excitement as this has, uh, and then positive feedback, so. This is just the first step in, uh, as we continue to provide recreational services for our, our youth, let me count, so, I like the luxury bill, we approve, uh, what was presented, uh, by Alliance, and, and, and move on.
And, and, and the waiver.
And the way.
Yes.
And the budget, we'll continue, five minutes left.
Do we have a second to, uh, the motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
No question, is this, this development, is it all of the high impact orders?
County, or, or?
County, too.
Is that stated in the ordinance?
County, too.
I have to look for it, but I don't believe.
No, it's not one of the statements.
They quote and quote, uh, impact, uh, uh, complete. There was a list of specifics in the high impact ordinance, but there are criteria, I think, defining high impact.
This is not that good of an impact, and, and no one who's has left.
Well, it has an impact on the surrounding, that way, certainly, it has, it'll have a major impact, I don't.
And most of the version, most of the language, or that felt.
Yeah, but if it, I mean, I mean, if qualifies, I think we need to at least look at that, or I do. Or is it going to, is it going to impact the community?
Positively, we hope, rest in gold.
Okay, any other discussion, gentlemen?
Sharon, if you would, uh, to record, could, uh, board take action to authorize you proceed with the application for the, uh, recreation trust fund grant?
That's also included in that motion, Mr. Chairman.
You.
Authorize the county manager and the county attorney.
You accept that, your second, everybody agreed, okay? That's, I just need to.
Need that for minutes, that we, I think, that's the.
Sure, they authorized us to proceed with that, because Lou Anne said we need to have official records, and we're.
I'll, 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 I'll.
That, that we should come. Okay.
Can we get a copy of that, and the, the need for a bridge, McCoy Bridge, um, stuff, by margin second, and there are add-ons?
We'll get you.
Um, F is, uh, the, uh, furniture, the sheriff's office, as you know, we purchased that building, uh, raised value to about seven hundred thousand, I think, Jack, we, we got that in three.
I have, yes.
About three hundred thousand, and, uh, and the points, renovation's finished, and we need some furnishing for it, and Jack may mention that earlier, uh, this is for, uh, Roger Holland, the Sheriff's Department, rather. Mr. Trammell, need some, desk, set behind furniture, set.
There'll still be stuff here, but everybody else.
They'll, they'll be in there. Jack, there, you propose taking that from contingency, from budgetizing contingency?
Uh, we, we, we can actually, you know, I think we might use one thousand purchase, actually, purchase of the property.
We did.
And, uh, and the, uh, and the renovation, all the renovations, that's just, uh, part of our, our county votes, and might as well, not much, but, they, they, they save a lot of money in the renovation process, and so, uh, they don't think we did have a lot of, so, they asked the chair for the offices in there, and so, uh, our first occasion to, uh, place, uh, the sheriff's office in, uh, uh, up there, the R S, are, uh, we're there, and picked out, uh, the chief, or something, might be a great merger for that. They'll hold up anywhere there, the office is operating pretty much, so, uh, the best price they got was around sixty-four thousand dollars, I'm at, six, six or three something, uh, and all the first to go ahead and, uh, get that merger, and after the building is completed, we need to, uh, go order that merger now. We, we'd actually thought about using some other furniture we had in, in the building, but we have some other needs written, so we're, uh, trying to, actually, I've got, uh, park, park, we're gonna have to have some new furniture, uh, and got a few things we're not.
We also looked at the jail, it might contain, there are no more moves, get all the hard to move.
And, and just point out from a budget standpoint, we still, we purchased much needed space for sheriff's office, purchased the building and furnishing it, and the total cost is about half, raised value.
And having, you know, under these, on the sheriff's department, having it involved, it looked at renovation, and this little money would cost, you know, for a contractor going there to do it, uh, and they've done a great job, like we did at the Highland Library, in, in one fourth. Yes, we are paying lead worker, uh, to go in there, but it's nothing like you would cost a contract, so, uh, it's easy, it's easy to say here, say, it is sixty-four thousand dollars, but, and we, and we go out and contract, we have that, to be able to finish, we finish right, and save a whole lot more than sixty-four thousand.
And, and the other good part about this, we've got some space, uh, picks up from the government license office, which will, that downtown, which will create another space in our, which develops, that will obviously have some line, and, 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 creating a few more jobs out there, so, I think if they serve new, that's the whole project, I think, uh, we're gonna have that furniture, and, uh, they have some chairs, and so, this, uh. So, we recommend for, for this consideration of our ability to purchase this furniture, making the corporation, if you can, to see, go up to, and not exceeding sixty-four thousand.
You want me to refer to recommendation, county manager, that is recommendation to Sheriff as well. I'll, I'll, any, any questions, which you don't have, about that, clarification, a motion being already proceeded with that, so, that, the motion, we have second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Probably Holland, I think, Holland drove it, yeah, I'm checking, I'm looking, I'm sure, I think, Sheriff's, I think, everywhere, I'm spending a lot.
I guess six thousand.
Santa Pail, yeah. Any other discussion, gentlemen? All in favor of the motion, see if you have a say, guy?
Aye.
Vote. That motion passes, you have a second. Thank you, Jack.
On Raleigh's own, okay. Can anything from Raleigh, Brunswick County, Roberson County, Onslow County?
It's a little.
I'll tell your friends hello in Onslow, yeah.
Who's that, that?
Love, yeah.
He knows who the. No, he's not by all, would he?
No, would be, yeah.
He's a Roberson.
He's a Rob. He's saying, we'll be meeting with, with Noah and, and the boys, so, we also be meeting with the outgoing governor and the incoming governor, so, see what's on their mind.
I'm going to be in operation, so.
No, I mean, I'm excited, but I'd like to have some beat there. All right, be safe, Ron.
All right.
See y'all later, my grave is, we'll show up.
Uh, hold your session.
I don't know how much damages can do that, but, I'll leave you with it, I'll see you.
All right.
I'll be careful.
Okay. Gentlemen, the next thing I had, and a new business, Christian Haven asked to, uh, bring up an item, uh, you talked to me about this earlier, concerning a piece of mail he received, uh, I think from the University of Rhode Island.
Yep, that was for the, this is, uh, I want it to, just mention here. I got a pamphlet, with these two things out here, in it, about some of these water studies that, uh, will happen, so, what I know is, I wrote some copy, I got, uh, Mike wrote some copies, I have toothpaste, what, in there, and, uh, let's take a look. Basically, about a year in past, someone planned for me, I was talking to him, and, and there was somebody doing some studies, and, I'm fairly certain, sure, it's just very same thing, and, uh, it was part of recommendations, and, uh, things that we need to have done, and then I see the same person from up here, actually, to meet more than we had, and, uh, the thing that bothered me about some thing.
What you're talking about.
You know, it's just like to tell a kid, get out of something, ladies, keep home, keep home, keep home, and that's all we got right here. And got these, these, these water studies, and, uh, it's been over thirty years since I've been in school, but I think if there was something like seven hundred million species, and living things, and it's, uh, everything it treats, and everything urinates, and everything breaks water, and eats, I don't care what it is, plants and everything. And, they're sending this thing out, and my memory has served me exactly right, and we've looked there, the planet board, they, they showed this film, recommend, here in Lake County, that all the land and water have a fence, but it's, it's, it's waste, those deep livestock there. Now, I don't know, but I sort of think this, earth, being here, being this year, has been a bother, and turning through good pasties, and I'm gonna keep them nice, but I really like telling what I think about them, but anyway, if we fence off all these streams around here, and cattle, and livestock, can you, and, 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 and drink water, and we're gonna have hot water, and sun, to, to, something for the cattle, or the livestock, to grow cattle. I'd be number one, if you do that, you're gonna have to start to be, to help us back. And also, in here, is, there are four of the pages that Phil's had to got it. This is what tonight is from, a copy I've got. And, uh, I know that, uh, what they're doing is, and I wish you could get one of this, and I'll let you, I happened to see Paul, and I was reading, what they're trying to, is, and I guess other people right here, some have issues going on with some of their agreements, like, and, and I just feel like it's some of the barrier, and those tools that they're doing, and this is from, uh, Warner School Forest National Resources, out of Athens, Georgia. Now, if my memory serves me well, the person who came here presented since with the problem, and, uh, then they came over here and took some place about, uh, uh, some stuff over there, they recommended the good street slope boards that's in here, and recommended a whole bunch of other things, or take, take the surveys on it. And, uh, I don't know if there is something we've underhanded, or could have them in here, done in these ten, but something I don't know if it's here, I come up with it. Well, as the first page come into it, yeah, I have thrown a few pieces in the garden, to be honest with you. It's, uh, today or sometime, I don't, yes, I sort of got to think, maybe I should read this a little bit further and go through the whole of that yard. But what it is, I own several pieces of property with, uh, streams on, this one is on twenty-sixth Spring Street, right here. And, uh, they said that they'd sent me this document, and I haven't filled out the application and all this, and, but I think it might be something for us just to look at, consider a little bit about it, and ask to give them information here to start leading everybody to believe in everything they've got in the package for you there. I don't feel like it's treating people up to the right, it's not, hey, go ahead, as far as that goes, I'm just gonna keep this package that starts out, I'm glad sure I've got that little pamphlet there, I mean. And we'll send this back. The pamphlet's in there, give me that whole thing. And, uh, this is, this one, this from University of Georgia. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, this school of forestry is, is actually, I don't know anything about it, but I would say with Chester, just since that, that you're on the run, it is, it's a simple. I can't really speak to it with any authority, I do know the University of Georgia is active in, uh, working out, Ch- Chalita Hydrological Lab, I know they have, uh, students and folks that come up and, and work in that, uh, forestry, like, when it's good, about all that. Well, I know there's a lot of keep on keepers out here with grant money wasted on something one year, and I just think they want this, and I would, like, especially, just, look at them, one person here, and, like, I was thinking, I'm keeping on getting these, there's something for me, and I saw it, had a planning board meeting, and I saw it presented here, and I thought that it was kind of the end of times, but I was, now, I'm wondering why they keep presenting this stuff here, looked like it was about to go over, and say somebody that keeps bringing, keeps bringing this up.
And this, I mean, I can say, certainly, this is nothing to county, we have nothing involved, you know, just.
No, I, I don't know, but, but, yeah, that's why I'm right, to be, to say somebody out there, it's good.
Here, just reading it, I'm just adding up the numbers separately, here, this is the project of this school of forestry at University of Georgia, and the letters from the professor, uh, at the school, so like, my. And I read on these, and this, this is, this is for this school of forestry, seeking opinions about screening up in Lake County, so, so forth. Do we have any authority?
Well, I would probably, up here, as discussion, you guys can look it up, and read about it, and see if there's anything we need to make, say, or something about, can't that balls there basically to, that's not really big deal, like, those pictures, make their presentation here for, they were showing a picture, that slope was very nice, but it wasn't, I said, I don't know, it shouldn't have that on, right, you know, but the slope board was over there.
I think we crossed that bridge, and just take two, we've done. Yeah, moving, moving us beyond that, so, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not contacted that. I mean, it's, okay, I, I think we've covered that grant. Got it. There are no ordinances or anything like that, to come up unless this board brought it up, and I'm, I've got some, we're working out on that. Okay, uh, gentlemen, consent agenda, uh, I'll just, first, reading with this, consent agenda is things that, uh, Jack puts altogether, is the minutes, Lord puts budget minutes in there, uh, things that generally don't require a lot of discussion, or no discussion, and we just take care of those, we turn motion, unless any, any single board member can say, well, I'd like to pull this item out, unless we discuss it separately, if it was some, if it required discussion, and if not, we just make one motion and approve it altogether. So, soon to see that, Lord did add budget, and then the number seventy-eight, and I think we got that. So, that's part of it, and item F, uh, who actually, Mike, is not part of consent agenda, that's been removed, uh, we'll discuss that at our January meeting. So, with that, the motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order, or if you want to remove something from it, that would be in order. The motion passed the consent agenda as presented. Have second. Have the motion in second, any discussion? Here you go, in all in favor, second, I'm saying aye. Vote.
The only we have for the committee assignments is your event.
I, I need that. And again, gentlemen, those committee assignments, or players on, if you want to change something, or not have to do something, or give up on something, uh, please let me know, at least prior to the January meeting, and, uh, we can do something, we can word out, and, and not, it's probably, we say that. That, oh, the voting delegate. We have, uh, called every year, the hundred counties, about five hundred county commissioners, there's a, about eight, eighteen, sixteen, eighteen commissioners on that meeting.
Unless I go.
And I was on this year, Jim Davis was on it, probably not. Me, basically, take suggestions, balloting in the counties, uh, things that we want the county legislature to do, or not do, or amend, or change, or whatever, uh, we roll that down, uh, I think, about fifty, things, we vote on our top ten, uh, and then the larger group of county commissioners, which meets, uh, in January, January twenty-third, I think, will vote to adopt them, and, and most of them were, were, it's always taken up to pass, comes on to us, uh, those type of things. And it's a pretty effective lobby, and, gentlemen, what this is, is, we will all be attending, if you, if you can, we get, each county gets one vote.
Each county gets one vote, the Parole of South County gets one.
Each county gets one vote, so we have to name one of us as the voting delegate, uh, for that, and we have to send that in to them, and as we get there, they check your credentials, make sure you only got one person, each county got one vote, so that we, we designate that.
All of us, Sheriff, and someone else.
I, I be, I have to do it, well, you gotta, I wanna be the delegate, that is, it's fine with me, we'll, we'll all decide how we're gonna vote, and we'll have one vote.
Maybe you want to be the delegate.
Yeah, and I can be that.
I love that, you got that.
Okay. When we get down there, we'll see what the issues are.
Really, it's done, it'll work, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, I've got, well, all that amounts to, and I did it last year, I've got it set up in a different section than y'all do, that's all, that's all that amounts to, y'all gonna be water eater, I guess. You got to leave on that idea. That is all the business coming before the board that I have, anything I've posted, that's coming forward, a closed session, as Chris, our attorney, uh, gentlemen, we will need a motion to go into closed session, so, we have motion.
Her, with thirty-five, three.
We have motion in second, thirty-five, thirty-five, just, to go into closed session, prefer, to do what Chester said, uh, all in favor, second, I'm saying aye, I propose. Motion passes, and Chester said he did anticipate, we could possibly make some action.
He did, yes.
No, 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 perhaps we will. How long is it gonna be, Chester?
For thirty minutes.
Oh, we'll waste that long.
May.
Well, she's for ten. All right, we're back in open session, uh, based on our conversation, uh, it would be my recommendation that we, uh, ask for another thirty days, uh, due diligence on the, uh, Parker Mendes forty-eight acres, uh, property that we refer to at, uh, the.
Thirty additional examination days.
We want thirty additional examination days, and another fifteen days in which to close.
Beyond that.
Beyond that, and we ask that be granted, and if that not be granted, that we, uh, terminate the.
Authorize, uh, county manager to send the notice necessary to terminate.
That, that would be motive, is that?
Yes, sir.
I would like. Okay, we have a second.
And authorize, I guess I should say authorize Jack to sign that amendment to the contract, granting that additional time, if it's agreeable to the second.
Okay, Mike, did you get that now? We will, thirty days more due diligence.
Authorize to sign him.
Yes. Thirty more days due diligence, and an additional fifteen days after that in which to close.
I'll do second to that.
Second. The motion in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, that's unanimous.
I'm ordering here, I guess, do we need to clarify that that's just completes some of our testing, or we need to?
I think we can say that, we don't have to for the motion, but, but the purpose of that is to complete our due diligence, uh, we have some due diligence, we're building property, uh, various testing and things like that, that, that we, the fifteenth is coming up, basically Friday.
Came quicker than they thought.
And we don't have enough time, we're not backing down the project, we just want more time to do our due diligence, as very plain to say. Okay, and then, uh, we have one more item, uh, Jack, do you have recommendation, based on ten seconds of our.
We're trying to close out the, uh, the Iowa Valley Elementary School project, we had additional expenses incurred by the architect for redesign, and, uh, and other, other things that had to go along with that additional time and so forth, and so, uh, the recommendation is to go ahead and settle up with the architect and balance this contract with the fifty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars, and, uh, that, uh, that would close out our obligation of, of buyer sales to Watson, on the case of the elementary school.
We have motion, they're paying. We have the motion, second, motion to pay, any discussion?
Sorry, I was.
To be paid from the.
According to that motion, we need to move that out of the Kansas City, and the school budget, oh, that, that architect.
So, some, some fancy budget for construction.
And that money is, is still there, I admit, I mean, just clarification for the media, uh, this, this was money built, built, uh, for additional time involving the project, uh, originally built in, uh, back in, uh, early part two thousand, well, approaching two years ago, and I think, uh, and most of us in the ring were.
A lot of it was redesigned due to change in building code, look back, in, uh, middle of two thousand nine.
And I think, uh, they were told by the board at that time, that we would revisit that at the end of the project, when we had everything paid out, and, and the project was completed, and we've come to that point, so that's the reason to settle at this point, so. Gentlemen, you heard the motion in second, uh, in, in the discussion. My, my favorite motion, second, I'm saying aye, I have those, motion passing, unanimous. I believe that's all the business.
I think I missed that, we won't get a chance to do it, y'all, again, for January officially, as your schedule, so, if I can see if there's anything else that we need to cover before you all, and everybody is, uh, aware of the schedule for January, just, just to kind of bring you back up to that, uh, the next regular meeting of the board in January, according to your schedule, that you adopted, the January, Tuesday, January date, I believe, the next regular meeting date.
Yes.
Also, on the ninth and the tenth, is the school for mechanic commissioners, mechanic commissioners in Nashville, that'll be on the ninth and the tenth, and then on the, uh, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, January will be, well, maybe by, on the nineteenth of January, will be our mid-year review work session with the board, uh, financial review, and preparation for the next year's budget, and then on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, is the state legislative goal meeting at, uh, Research Friday, Raleigh, uh, and, uh, I think everybody is, uh, signed up, or participating in that. We don't have anything else to do, uh, with regard to our financing, since we went with a loan modifications to the bond thing, so, we do have a public hearing scheduled for the QZAD portion of our financing, uh, January day, is that right? Uh, I think those are the only things that I can recall, that we want to make sure everybody was aware of. I do have one last thing, Mr. Chairman, I'll pass this out, this is not something you need to take action on, but once a year, the, uh, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, uh, reviews the community services block grant program, which is handled by our, uh, Community Action Program, MTP, and so, they would like for you to take a look at their official report over the next thirty days, if you have any comments, if you relate those to us, we'll put those in a, a response back to the state, uh, for, uh, for making program for progress, I'm willing to take this with you and look at it, if you have any comments, you can call Chuck Suck, or you can call me, and we'll try to, uh, bring you up to date on that, but, uh, something we do each year, required that the local government body review their program once a year, and this is the time to do that, doesn't require any actions, just, uh, review any comments that you might have.
I'm sure that we're probably meeting on the board, but we don't see all of you before the holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, we'll all see you next year again, okay, one time?
Motion, adjourned?
All in favor? Aye. Adjourned, thank you. Here you go.
I don't know what part I took an hour for you guys to discuss.